Well, welcome to the May 14th North Hampton School Board. As Chair of the North Hampton School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are, A, providing public asset access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the North Hampton School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, (646) 876-9923, webinar ID 99332765461, with password of 466600, or by clicking on the link that is provided on the website, and B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing this meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing this meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided to the website, on the website of SAU Office. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the pub, alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call (603) 926-8992, extension 103, or email Rhonda Evans at sau21.org. Am I reading things that I shouldn't be reading, Bill, or?
No, you're good.
All right. And D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event of a public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. So let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also indicate whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. So we will now take a roll call.
Aaron Stanton?
Here, alone at the time, but potential for little ones.
Greg Duffy?
Present, nobody here.
Tom Von Jess?
Present, alone.
Martin Tavishian?
I'm here and alone.
Nermina Peterson?
Present, alone.
Okay, I have the roll call.
Okay, thank you. So I guess the first order of, is approval of the minutes from April 2nd.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the April 2nd, 2020 regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Ready for the roll call?
Everyone in agreement? Roll call.
Aaron Stanton?
Yes.
Greg Duffy?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
And Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
Thank you, Rhonda. All right, moving along, next, correspondence and commendations. Does anyone have any correspondence or commendations? Yes, Sue?
I have commendations. Did you want correspondence first?
I'm content with either order.
Okay, so I would like to commend the, a couple of teams of teachers for some really great work in the past couple of weeks. We had two parent nights via Zoom. We had a kindergarten parent information night, and that was very successful, and we want to thank the kindergarten team, Ellen Pond Grace, Anna Spalding, Leah Cronin, and Lynda Hebert for coming, along with Becca and Tracy. So that, that worked out really well. And we also had a self-care night, like with a, with a group of panelist teachers that really focused on the social-emotional part of the fact that parents are actually teachers. So we entitled it "School at Home." They said this would be fun, and we had a really great panel and really good attendance, I would say. So Kate Salvati, who's our school psychologist, Kim Cludier, the BCBA, Mara DeRozier, our school nurse, and Deb Vasconcelles, our school counselor, were, were the panelists, and they each gave a presentation. And one of the things that really stuck out to me that, that, the one graphic that I remembered the most was Kate had a graphic about it during this pandemic and these times that, you know, everybody says we're all in the same boat, but it's a little more accurate to say we're all in the same storm, and some of us are in different boats, and just kind of acknowledging some of the stresses and some of the challenges that go along with this. So those teachers did a great job, and again, Becca and Tracy co-hosted as well, so thanks to them. I'd also like to give a shout-out to our student government. They have taken some leads in some really nice connection and giving back opportunities. So there are a group of them that offer to collect Legos and sanitize them and then redistribute them, knowing that a lot of the kindergarten and first grade classes are doing a lot of activities with Legos, and they also are organizing a sidewalk chalk contest, and they've ordered extra sidewalk chalk, and they're delivering that to people who need sidewalk chalk. So that, that was really another great example. And then the last shout-out is for the fifth grade team. I jumped into a couple of different classrooms and saw some really neat, really neat presentation opportunities. So the whole fifth grade gets together usually once a week, and this week they did a Kahoot game, which is like a electronic game, and they had to answer questions about staff, like little-known facts about the staff, and then they were going to submit their own little-known facts about themselves, and they'll do a Kahoot around that, I think, this Thursday. Also, so I learned some funny things, like, like, did you know that Catherine LaCroix jumped off the highest cliff in the world and water skied on top of a water skiing pyramid? Like, things like that. And then also, I saw a couple of classrooms that did really great presentations. So one of the second grades, Lindsay Lewis's class, did biography presentations, and some of the kids were dressed in the person that they researched, and Leah Cronin's kindergarten class did some presentations on research that they had done too. So I just wanted to give shout-outs for some really great things during the closure that, that we're seeing with our North Hampton staff.
Thanks, Sue. That's, that's awesome to hear, and I just wanted to touch upon it real quick, that as part of our school board goals, we had talked about bringing, starting our meetings a little bit differently, bringing in people, students, teachers, to share this type of stuff, so that we can give the community some visual, some exposure to it, as well as ourselves. So it's not something that we've forgotten. Dr. Lupini and I were talking about it last week. We know that thing, like, it's all hands on deck right now. So moving forward, we, we would like to find a way to, we don't want to stress anyone overly, more stressed than they already are, but love to hear the stories. That's fantastic.
Yeah, and, and actually, there's two other shout-outs for our other administrators that I think they were going to talk a little bit about it, but since they're not, since they're in non-participant mode. So I wanted to give a shout-out for Becca, and she, she's done a lot of extra work during this, but one of the things that she started that's been really helpful was staff wellness surveys, and she's been, you know, checking in. She started kind of tracking how the staff was feeling about the stresses in the remote learning environment and, and identifying things that we could do as administrators to lessen that stress. Some of them were around communication, some of it was around Google Classroom. So we really saw improvement in how staff were feeling as time went on, and Becca really took that one on. And then a shout-out to Tracy. One of the other things that you might not realize that keeps happening is Special Education Service and Special Education Meeting. So she, so they're holding IEP meetings on a regular basis and getting all of those things accomplished even in this environment. So that's no easy, that's no easy task, so, and to give those two shout-outs to.
Thank you.
I have another one I wanted to add quickly. Mr. Zaliga, you know, I have watched him between my eighth grader and my fifth grader, but with the eighth grade, he is going above and beyond prepping these kids for next year and helping them feel confident and ready for entering geometry. And it's not just always the math, it's really being supportive and, you know, nurturing them along the way. And I think, you know, for my, if I speak for Cameron, it's, he's become really someone that she relies on to go to, to ask questions, and he is always there. Like, if she wants to sign on, he's there for Google Meets, he hosts meetings basically every other afternoon for them to jump on, and he's just, I think, gone above and beyond with the kids in eighth grade. And in, to add on to the special education, Mrs. Warnicki has been amazing for Ashton at the lower level in kindergarten, signing on, getting him to, you know, read when he won't read for me, but, you know, encouraging him, and again, there anytime I need it, setting up, you know, weekly meetings, twice-weekly weekly meetings, and supporting me when I start to panic that maybe next year isn't going to be the time for him to move on to first grade, like, really supporting me through that. So to both of them, I really appreciate what, you know, the effort that they're putting in.
Thank you, Aaron.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Anything additional?
I just had one, one quick ask. Susan, can you share a little bit about the teacher parade? I saw the pictures on the email on that, but it, that was a, a lot of excitement, it seemed like, and I wanted to hear about the experience.
It was great. I, I have to say, I think the teachers were just so happy to see all of the families and all of the kids, and we had a 24-mile loop through North Hampton, and we didn't, we didn't get to every single street, but we did our best to get as close to all the neighborhoods as we could, and we saw families that found a way to find a safe spot to watch the parade if we didn't go down their street. So there were stretches of road where there were, you know, where we would run into different families. There were, the teachers decorated the cars, we had giant stuffed animals hanging out of sunroofs, we had Jagi the Jaguar, we had just signs, and lots of, lots of families all along the way. And, you know, one of the things that was really kind of, at least I thought was, was touching, and it wasn't just one place, but we saw, we saw couples who clearly didn't have children that just came out and cheered for the teachers and had thank-you signs, like, as if we were the first responders, or it was really, it was really a nice community event, and everybody, it, it worked out really well. We did, we did have a staggered start, and we did have a joint ending. We had somehow ended up all together, and there was no space between us because of a, maybe, maybe, maybe a wrong turn or two on the route, and so some of the groups ended up back together. But we were so appreciative of all the families and all the kids that were out, and there was lots of sidewalk chalk and signs, and it was, it was really, it was really great. So thanks to everybody that, that was out there greeting us, because that made it really special.
Cool.
Thanks, Tom. Any additional comments? All right, thank you, everybody, for that. Moving on to questions and comments from those in attendance. I see we have seven or eight attendees. I think Rhonda, if questions come in, they go to you as the host, correct?
Yes, they can submit something through the chat feature. I believe we all could potentially see that, or they can also submit a Q and A, and I think we've been able, that they can raise their hand if they want to say something as well, and I would see that.
Okay, so doesn't appear right now that there's anything, but given the circumstances, if the board agrees, perhaps during this, if someone from the outside does have a question, I would be inclined to answer and address it outside of sort of the agenda, if you guys are good with that.
Absolutely. I'm fine with that, Greg. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. All right, we're in agreement. Then moving on to number five, educational updates, school council. Sue, is that you?
That's me again. Look at that. So we actually, I think, had two meetings since, this time, since our last board meeting, which is kind of funny. Sometimes we didn't have any, and I think we've had two. So we accomplished a number of things. One of them was we did finalize the vision statement, which I can read to you right now. The vision statement that was approved by the staff and the Leadership Council is "North Hampton School aspires to develop caring, kind, and curious students by promoting these 21st century skills: communication, critical thinking and problem-solving, empathy, integrity and responsibility, learner's mindset, and perseverance." So that was the result of a lot of input and some back and forths around, around wording and values, and I know we shared with you a, a close iteration of this, maybe two months ago, but this is the final version, and the Leadership Council is very happy about that. We've also been working on reflecting on our goals from the school improvement plan and our, have a draft of a progress report for this, this year's school improvement plan to build next year's goals. So we plan to meet the end of May to develop new goals for next year's school improvement plan, and we also did some work around schedule structures and got feedback from Leadership Council about that in order to move forward with a schedule that might look a little bit different next year during the day in terms of UA classes and, and instructional blocks.
Greg, if I may, I just, I was notified that the chat feature was not working, so I believe that I did enable that. So if anybody has anything, you know, do that or shoot me an email, and then I'll see if, you know, fix it if it's not fixed now.
Okay, thank you, Rhonda.
The last update is that we will be, some of the members will roll over. So we've identified which, which members of the Leadership Council were in their second year of their term, and will be naming the, the new members next, next month. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions for Sue?
Just out of curiosity, I think it's a great idea to have kind of rolling participants in, but some that stay, that some that continue on, so that there's continuity as well. The new participants that come on every year or so, do they raise their hands and say that they'd like to participate? Are they nominated? Kind of what's the, what's the process for, for the new folks to come on?
Well, so this is my first time with this as well, but, so there's, there's a, there's a, a member from each grade-level team. So, so for example, the, the teacher, if there was a teacher in second grade and it was her second, it was her second year, then she would go back to her team and ask who was willing to step up. And so it usually happens that way to keep the, to keep the representation the same. And then the, the vice chair becomes the chair. So last year Dana was the chair, and Dan Singer was the vice chair, so he moved up to be the chair. So next year, I believe it's Rebecca Jones. She's our vice chair now, so she'll be the chair of Leadership Council, and we'll have to choose a vice chair that would be the one the following year. So the representation, the, the effort is there for the representation from each area to stay the same, and they usually just go back to their colleagues and find who's, who's, who's willing to step up.
Thank you.
Hey, Sue, a question on, so finishing up on the, on the long, on the vision, I recall there was also mission statements and guiding belief work. Is that ongoing, next phase type stuff?
Well, so the guiding, like, the, the values are kind of built into the, into the mission, into the vision statement, and then we did come up with the PRIDE acronym, which takes some of those values to make it more kid-friendly, and so we're really looking forward to rolling that out next year with students and, and recognizing those positive attributes in students during the school year and during the day. And so that, so we thought that went along with Jaguar PRIDE, and so the PRIDE acronym incorporates some of those attributes. So the P is perseverance, responsibility, integrity, and we went back and forth a lot with the D, and we landed with doing the right thing as a kid-friendly term, and then the E is for empathy. So those were the, that, that we're going to build off of that, but we probably will have some guiding beliefs, statements that are more adult-centered that would go along with this as well, but that's not been done yet.
Okay. Any other questions for Sue? Nope. All right. Moving on to continuing business, an update on our COVID-19 relative to school closure. Is that Dr. Lupini, are you going to? I think you're still on mute, Bill.
I was muted. So thank you. Yes, and I'll, I'll start this, go to Dr. Hobbs, Dr. Arquillian, Mr. Farrar, and then, and then Susan Snyder. So my, my part is brief, it's more table-setting, we, it's largely around return to school and those efforts. So as, as I think you know from, from some, some material we sent you, we have put together a task force and working groups focused on return to school while we're trying to finish out the remainder of this year and look at summer programming, because we know this is a huge task. So we've put together a series of working groups on crisis response, return to instruction, post-secondary response technology, and operations that are meeting. You have three of the five chairs of those groups here, the others are Jason Saltmarsh and Donna Couture, and we have board representation from each of the districts in this process as well, to look at a variety of scenarios around what we may encounter in September, return to, return to instruction on time, sort of a starting out in, in, in remote instruction, or the idea of rolling closures. And we're taking a look at all of these aspects of our operation within those potential scenarios, as well as things like the need for, you know, what would, what would reopening on time look like in terms of social distancing, testing, PPE, all, all those kinds of, of issues. And I will tell you, I met with the chairs on, on Wednesday, we're meeting, we, so their groups are meeting weekly, we're meeting weekly to debrief the task forces, meeting weekly, and I was overwhelmed by the work that they were able to do in one session, and a little bit overwhelmed by the task, because it's huge. And so we wanted to get out in front of this, we are out in front of this, the state has a similar task force in place, their report is not due till June 30th, our, our report will be published or available around June 12th. Buildings will begin working on what that looks like at the building level, the beginning of June, with something for us by the end of June. And so that's where we are. We're just, we're just starting out this work. We have parents, we have board members, we have teachers, we have EAs, we have a, I've encountered the total number of people, but we have a lot of people involved in this effort with a lot of voice to it, and we're going to do some survey work, we're going to make sure we continue to inform the community through our Saturday sessions and through these board meetings, but we're really focused on what in the world does coming back to school look like, and what kinds of things do we need to have in place to do that? So that's where we are. I want to say one other word, and that is that I just want to applaud the principals in all of our schools, because they're trying to plan end-of-the-year activities, and because we get more information, I keep moving the ball on them, right? So we get more and more updates as to the kinds of things the governor's put in place in terms of emergency orders, the kinds of things that legal counsel is telling us in terms of potential district liability around bringing groups of people together, all of those things, and they're trying to make plans to honor eighth graders, to honor high school seniors in the right way, all within those constraints. And that's very, very, very difficult. And I just want to acknowledge the great work that they've done, to be very, very creative in terms of making sure that eighth graders, as they're leaving their K-8 schools, and our high school seniors, as they're leaving Winnetka High School, are honored appropriately, and, and sort of apologize to them for those continued changes in parameters, but they're doing great work. So I'm happy to take any questions on those items. I'll go to Dr., if not, I'll go to Dr. Hobbs, Dr. Arquillian, Mr. Farrar, who are going to talk somewhat about the, the task, the working groups they're working with. Greg is, is representing your board on one of our working groups, and Susan is a member of our overall task force, and I want to thank them for doing that.
Any additional questions for Dr. Lupini? All right.
All right, thank you. Hearing none, right? So we've got just some logistical things coming up towards the end of the year that we're working through from the SAU Office, just making sure our end-of-year reporting's done, trying to get a handle on some of the slippery expectations of the DOE, just kind of bookkeeping things. So that's been taking a good amount of time, but obviously, the big push right now is our, our working groups related to the return to school task force. I'll be chairing the return to instruction task force, which we had Becca on, actually, we met today, this afternoon, and Greg was there as well. And so I'll kind of give you the update of what we're doing. We're meeting weekly. I, as chair, will be reporting back to the, the core group of the task force that's meeting on Monday, every Monday, and kind of getting that two-way communication going. We've got a strong group, I think we're up to 13 or 14 right now. We've divided our task, and I apologize if I've told you this before, but we've divided our task into four main components. The first one is assessing learning progress, identifying the gaps of, of kind of what we've had throughout the course of the spring and over the summer. We're looking, as Tom said, is, at some of those shorter diagnostic methods that we can use in the fall, but we're also looking at ways we can just facilitate communication with teachers, curriculum alignment, that kind of thing. The second main focus for us is going to be augmenting instruction, and of course, we have to break this down across the multiple scenarios that we might be presented with, either, you know, starting in face-to-face and moving to remote, or starting in remote or delayed, or rolling.
It's 13 hours.
Okay. So we're trying to break these across the different scenarios, but the, the task of that group is how we're going to, how we're going to change our instruction, how we're going to adapt our instruction to the new needs that we're finding through the assessment group. That also has to do with grading and assessment, right? And it has to do with student accountability, teacher accountability, intervention plans, tier-two and tier-three, those kind of things. The third work, third area we're really focusing on is structural supports. That has to do with what our schedule for learning may look like, whether it be face-to-face or whether it be remote. I think that we've been used, kind of loosely using the term remote 2.0 as, as a term just to kind of understand the learning curve that our teachers have been through, and our students have been through, obviously, but also our parents. I think our parents have kind of come to terms with what this looks like at home and have some, have some good feedback, so we, we had a really good discussion around that today. And then, of course, professional development is the fourth group. That has to do with, you know, what kind of learning do we need to place in our initiatives for teachers? I think one of the core messages that we expressed today, and if you think, Greg, was, was the, the return to the school task is the initiative really that we focused on for this year. The sense of being overwhelmed with anything else is something we want to really be cautious about. So I think that was the sentiment expressed today in the group, but we've got a lot of ideas on how we can help support kind of the changes or augmentation of learning that's going on. So, so with that, I'll just, I'll pause if you guys have questions on our work, or Greg, if you want to add anything, I'm happy to entertain them.
No, I have nothing further to add. Nice, nice job. Does anyone have any additional questions for Dr. Hobbs?
I just have one quick question. David, do you get a sense that, well, this is all really strange and uncomfortable, and teachers are learning a lot, and students are learning a lot, and parents are learning a lot. Do you get the sense through your conversations that teachers know that everyone understands that it's a, it's a hard time, and that mistakes happen with technology and learning, and, and there's leeway there? Because just my own experience with my own team, not educators, but my own team, they, they went through a similar thing about video conferences and kind of interacting with clients that are remote versus face-to-face, and, and once they realized that they had space and that their kids could pop up behind them and that their dogs were going to bark, and it's okay, I think they were more comfortable. I'm not saying they're comfortable yet, but I'm saying they were more comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, there has been kind of a forced reality in a lot of situations. I know my kids are running in and out of the camera all the time, and I, my sentiment is, you know, that that's just kind of a fact of remote learning life. That said, we're dealing with, we're dealing with personality type. Teachers are, teachers want to be, have it perfect, they want to do their job well, they want to be perceived as having, having a full knowledge, working knowledge of all the newest technology. So, you know, it's, it's as much a personality type as it is a reality. But I think, and I think from an administrative standpoint at this school, we've done a good job in just saying, hey, look, try new things, coaching them along, making sure that they know they have our, our support and our board support. And the other thing is, back to Becca's surveys, just asking them for feedback on how we can better support them with their needs. I think that goes a long way with just the posture of trying new things and understanding that we're here to, we're here to help.
Yeah, I think you're spot on. So in the classroom, it's their environment, and they control it, and they know what's going on. And, you know, they, it, it's, it's structured for a reason. I think you're spot on that, you know, knowing that they have the boards and parents and your support, and the fact that you're asking them what you can do differently is, is fantastic, and hopefully, hopefully, they, they know it for sure.
You know, I think we had a good vibe just for, for today's meeting, you know, this is the first meeting for our return to instruction group. There was a lot of positivity, frankly, rather than anxiety, and I was encouraged by that.
That's great, thank you.
I think Caroline, who's, Dr. Arquillian, who's going to report next, I think, I think you'll have a comment on that question as well. I anticipate you having a comment on that question as well.
Absolutely. I have a bunch of comments that relate to that, unless there are questions for, for Dr. Hobbs.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm chairing the crisis response working team, it's one of our working teams for, for reentry. And ours, the, the focus is about student and staff mental health in all aspects of the reentry plan. So it's our charge to make sure that mental health, social and emotional topics are priority across all of our plans. And we'll be assessing staff readiness, self-care, reporting protocols. We want to create a climate of caring, you know, and I think, Tom, this gets to what you're saying as far as, you know, we need to be good to each other, we need to assume best intentions, you know? So when there is a mistake or there is something that's not perfect, it's okay. And that's easier said than done for some people. But, you know, just starting there and, and recognizing that we need to have a focus on self-care, a focus on mental health, you know, throughout this entire traumatic event, it's been traumatic and challenging for, for all these groups, staff, kids, parents. So shining a light on that, and then making plans to make sure that we're addressing that in, in all aspect of our reentry plan. So that's what we'll be working on. I'm happy that if, for North Hampton, we have your school counselor, Deborah Vasconcelis, known as VAS, representing North Hampton on the group, so she's a great addition and great contribution to our team. Also on this topic, speaking of wellness surveys, we, we did not as frequently as North Hampton, but we did an all SAU wellness survey a couple of weeks ago to all staff. And the teachers reported, we asked how they were, we were encouraged how they reported they're doing well. However, they admit they're hard on themselves, so this is more in line of what we're saying in that they, they say that their administrators are very supportive, building level and SAU administration got a shout out, that was a theme, however, they're still hard on themselves. So what they're asking for is that we maintain a focus on self-care, on mental health, on social, emotional topics. So that, you know, once we, when you focus on those things for anyone, then you can move ahead and address academics. And, you know, even on a good day, you should do that, but when you're going through challenging times, you have to do that. So they were saying that, you know, we did a lot of focus on that at the beginning, like, oh, my gosh, everybody's home, but, you know, take care of yourselves, and they're asking, we need to maintain that throughout, we can't lose sight of that. So we did put into, into play some fun wellness events. We, we implemented Wellness Wednesdays. We have staff who've stepped up and they're hosting different wellness events, I have three solid weeks booked in like a couple of days, it was really fun to coordinate that. So, so that's happening. The other piece is, you know, I'll echo what Dr. Hobbs said about, about remote learning, and that, that was another big theme. Please, no new initiatives, anything non-essential right now, let's hold off on that because the, the remote learning is the new initiative. So going into the fall, we'll be prepping and preparing to be ready for kids and to meet kids where they are, given where, you know, we've been out for, for three months and implementing remote learning. That's going to be our initiative for the fall. So all of that is happening. I also wanted to give you a brief update about special education. I've mentioned that we've decided to plan for our ESY special education programs in the summer to be remote learning, given the safety precautions that are essential and the guidance that we have at this time. We've, I think, Mr. Ferrera is going to talk about meals in that that program is going very well, and we're committed to continuing that throughout the summer. And then finally, the, the Bureau of Student Support announced today that we will have a parent portal in our special education online system, it's called NESIS Connect. It's a parent portal in which parents can sign IEPs digitally. So that's going to be starting on Monday, and we have guidance for staff and parents that we'll be sending out probably tomorrow. And I think that is, that's my update, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Eric Arquillian, does anyone have any further questions?
Evening. So from a financial perspective, we are, we are gaining greater clarity in regard to funding sources in regard to this, this crisis. We have received the allocations via the CARES Act, federal stimulus. Across the entire SAU, we are receiving approximately $370,000. North Hampton's portion is $14,000. So it's not a substantial amount, however, it's based, the, the percentage is based on Title I allocation, that's how they determine how each individual school district funds are allocated. However, we are pursuing FEMA funds as well, we have put in an application to start the process to recoup expenditures via the FEMA Public Assistance Program. This, this is something we are eligible for, for some of our, our cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting, you know, potentially some PPE, those type of costs relative to the crisis. That is reimbursed at a 75% level. So we fully anticipate, you know, receiving those, those funds via FEMA. Now, it, it's important to, you know, it's, as we look forward, it's important to take into account the, the revenue collection at the town level and the challenges that they're facing, or really, we are all facing as a community. So we did meet with the town administrator and finance manager for North Hampton, as well as town officials in all of our other SAU member towns. And specifically, we, we really just wanted to hear their perspective on, on potential issues with revenue collection. And we also want to provide them, you know, the, the outlook on the school's finances, the cost savings, or the cost-saving activities that we're pursuing and that you're all aware of, as well as those potential funding sources via CARES Act, FEMA, and, and certainly if any other similar funds are passed at the federal level. So, you know, across the board, all of our, you know, I think the common theme for, for all of our towns is that there's great uncertainty as to the degree that this crisis will affect tax revenues. You know, they are all at, I mean, every, every town is, is analyzing the data, you know, taking a look at a number of factors. However, there really is no model that exists that can, that can accurately predict how this will, will affect those tax collections. So we're meeting with all the, you know, we're going to regroup with, with all the towns, you know, on an ongoing basis, some, some of them are meeting monthly, others were waiting after July 1. That is, that's really the date that everyone will receive a better idea of how this affects us. Property taxes are due July 1st, and once we, once we have a, some visibility into what that looks like, we'll, they'll be able to better gauge how this, this will affect our various communities. So we, we will be meeting with them, you know, after that date. December 1st is another big date as far as property taxes as this crisis continues, and we'll certainly keep you updated as, as we continue our communication with the towns. Because it's, we just feel it's really important that we maintain that coordination and, and partnership because this, this affects all of us, both from the town and the school side. So from a financial perspective in regard to reopening schools, we, we certainly, I mean, I think I've mentioned this before, we anticipate additional costs and required investments when we, we determine what schools look like. So as part of this return to school task force, one of the, the exercises that we are conducting across all these, these working groups and the recommendations that we provide will include a, a, you know, quantifying the financial investment required. So we'll be taking a look at the three different scenarios that we're, we're looking at along with those recommendations and estimated costs to the school district. You know, on the, on the, at the same time concurrently, we are meeting with our individual principals and, and looking at our budgets for next year, reassessing our budget priorities and our budget assumptions based on enrollments, based on, you know, any potential curriculum or program changes, and, and seeing, you know, really prioritizing what we have in the budget for next year should we need to make reductions because of added investments, you know, for whatever school looks like. So we just want to have that, those levers ready and, and, and be prepared should we need to, to make any, you know, cuts in costs based on, you know, what this task force recommends and what school actually looks like come the fall. I am chairing the, the operations working group, and we, we do have a, a couple of North Hampton employees. We have Patrick Guedi, who's our athletic director and a teacher at North Hampton, as well as Mara DeRosa, who is the school nurse at North Hampton. And they'll be helping us along with, I think there's 14 other members to really take a look at athletics, facilities, transportation, food service, and then just general school operation, you know, and, and, and what those recommendations are based on, you know, potential, potential outcomes. So we're, we're going to be asking questions such as, you know, you know, what, what's the, what's the, what's the social distancing requirements in the building in specific rooms, cafeteria, gymnasium, in the hallways, will we need, will, will we need to screen staff and teacher, or staff and students? Is there PPE that's required? Are we going to have stickers on the, on the floors to, you know, one way or to just distance people? So these are all, and these are just hypothetical questions that I'm throwing out there, but these are, those are the areas from an operations standpoint that we need to address and then provide recommendations to the overall task force. We did meet yesterday, and I think we have a great team who, who are developing those, those action plans with recommendations. So finally, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you, the school board, for approving the continuation of the food service program through the summer. That's a free program for our families so that we can offer meals to, to those students and families, you know, during this, these, these extraordinary circumstances. I also like to thank Dr. Eric Arquillian, our school nutrition managers, school, new, school nutrition staff, our social workers, educational associates, all who have been an integral part of that food service program, who are serving over 300 students per day. And we anticipate that going up to, you know, the 400 range through the summer. And I do want to emphasize that this, this is a, this is a program for, for all of our students and all of our families, regardless of financial need. I mean, these are difficult times where we're working remotely from home while we're trying to care for our kids, provide them assistance with their educational experience and just, you know, get through the day. So we want, I mean, we, we want to make sure that we can at least offer, you know, some meal preparation for some of our families who, you know, that's the last thing on their mind getting through this, this period of time. And finally, you know, this, the, you know, so the school board approved this, this plan. You know, our, our staff's doing an amazing job to execute it, but boy, our community has really stepped up. And, you know, we started a fundraising campaign to, to bridge the gap for funding. A good portion will be reimbursed via USDA funds. However, there is, there is a slight gap between reimbursements and our estimated expenditures. And, and our community reached out and they, they asked us, you know, how can we help? And we set up a GoFundMe campaign and they've raised over $10,000, you know, in a matter of a couple of weeks, and it's just been an overwhelming outpouring of support and really, really shows, you know, what, how this community's come together in a really difficult time. So, so thank you to all of our community members who have supported the food service program. So happy to answer any questions in regard to any of these items.
I have one if I may, Greg. So Matt, first of all, thank you for your communication and partnership with the towns around the, the budget and that, and that, the expected taxes. I was, I was actually surprised the other day to see on, online, on Facebook, there's a community page, a conversation with some pretty knowledgeable people in town, wondering if, wondering, wondering what the school was doing with all the extra money because school's not in session, right? And it was, it occurred to me that they may not understand that there's fixed costs with the school buildings, there's contractual obligations, and then in addition to what you were just saying, there's unanticipated expenses that are going on, and just because we're learning remotely doesn't mean that the costs go away. So I guess I would just encourage you, or I'm thinking out loud, to, to, to think about what we might be able to communicate to the community or to the leaders that you're talking to about some of the fixed expenses and contractual obligations we have because just because the kids aren't on campus doesn't mean we're not spending money.
You're absolutely right, Tom, and you know, and that was part of our conversation with, you know, with the town, town administrator and, and the finance manager was, hey, you know, we are, you know, we are recognizing some savings, but we're also incurring costs when it comes to, you know, technology. And we didn't have devices for every student at North Hampton. Subscriptions, Zoom subscriptions, so we can lock down a secure environment rather than the, you know, the free version where you hear about Zoom bombing, that can't happen with, with schools. You know, you know, electronic signatures. There's, there's the PPE, there's a, there's the, the extra sanitizing and cleaning that's required for the, for this, for the school. So, so where, where we do save on, on certain areas, and, and I, you know, I'll go into, I'll, I'll go into depth now, but during my finance report, you know, there's, we, we save, we, we save on certain accounts such as electricity. we, we save, we, we save on certain accounts such as electricity, heating fuels, you know, incrementally, spring extracurricular stipends. We're saving on transportation costs, some supplies costs. But as, as you mentioned, Tom, we, you know, school, school operations are really rooted in, in fixed costs. I mean, I'd, I'd say if I, that, you know, probably roughly 85% of the budget is, is fixed. And, you know, and a good portion of that is, is also is personnel. So we, you know, we, we may be, the, the school buildings may not be open, but the school is fully functional and we're providing full instructional needs for all of our, for all of our students. And it may look differently, but that doesn't mean that it's, that, that it costs, that, that we're, we're going to save a, a ton of money in costs. It's a good point.
So Tom, I, I, in addition to that, I think one of the things that we talked about early coming out of these meetings with town officials is we'll, we'll be very open about, about monies that you're turning back to taxpayers. You know, normally those kinds of things are done and not many people know about it. I, I, I think you'll see us be very clear about monies that are turned back to, to the taxpayers this year. As well as it's one of the reasons we're doing this other exercise, so that we can be very clear about the, the additional costs that will be necessary to reopen schools safely. So, so really it's, 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 it's part and parcel of all of these, these efforts we've been involved in, in meeting with the town administrators and something you're going to do tonight in terms of reviewing your expenditure report in terms of, of that, that task force, to be very open so that people can look and say, this is what it's going to cost to reopen schools, given the parameters that we've been given by the CDC, DHHS, the governor's office, et cetera.
Thank you. Yeah, I know you guys are doing a great job. Like I said, it's, it's, it's just funny how misinformation can spread and then it becomes the truth even though it's so inaccurate. So I just want to make sure that we stay on top and, and get ahead of that message.
That's our goal.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks, Tom. That's a good point. I think the narrative is, well, we're out of school, so it should be cheaper. When the fact is, it could be more expensive. This doesn't necessarily equate to savings.
I mean, a good example of that for next year is, I mean, you know, what, depending on what school looks like, there, there may be a need for additional bus routes. Well, busing, transportation is not cheap. I mean, if you look at the, so say, I'm just saying hypothetical, who knows what, what could happen? But consider some type of split session type of scenario where we would like, and hypothetically, you need to double your, your busing due to that? That's $2 million across the entire SAU. And we certainly don't have $2 million lying around. So, so that's just a very, that's a very, you know, simple example. But there's, there are certain, there's, looking into next year, there, there could potentially be some significant costs that are not accounted for.
Okay. All right. Thank you, doctors and Matt for the update. And any additional comments or questions for the group before we move on to the next item?
We can go to Susan. I think Susan has an update as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sue.
That's okay. It's, it's more just, you know, work that, that, that we've been doing during the closure that, some of it is work that we would do if we weren't closed. And it's planning work that has been going on that I just wanted to report out on. The technology committee has met and gotten started with some subgroups to work on planning the new technology plan for the year span 2020 to 2024. And I think that, you know, keeping in mind some of the technology needs that we could have is, is part of that planning process. So we've been identifying the goals and the working groups to develop that new plan. We've also been working on plans for eighth grade graduation and end of the year activities. I actually just met with Chief Moon today to make sure that what we had been thinking of would be in line with public safety and her opinions about that. And partly, you know, due to the end of year planning for teachers to get back in the building in small groups and, you know, kind of button up their rooms and provide an opportunity for families to return items they may have borrowed during remote learning and provide us an opportunity to return to families anything that may be in classrooms that belong to kids. So we will likely be finalizing those plans soon and getting that information out. It, it's, it's most likely that the drop off and pickup of materials for families will be after June 4th. Those days that follow that the teachers will still be working is, is part of our tentative plan, which is June 5th, June 8th, June 9th and June 10th. Again, that would, that's going to be smaller groups as well. We're working on things like developing class lists for next year, schedules, all of those kinds of end of the year activities that, that are really important. And we've been working with the parent group for eighth grade, for the eighth grade graduation to make sure that, that that really is special. We already have some lawn signs on order so that there'll be signs in, in students' lawns that are more generic. And we're working to have some signs for the, in front of the school. And, and some other activities and a couple of things that, that we hope are a little bit of a surprise for the kids. So, and I wouldn't say too much right here. My update.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Okay, we ready to move on? Does anyone have any additional questions? All right. Moving on to item seven, new business. Matt is going to take us through some tree harvesting, which right when you think you've sort of been around the block, something new. Matt?
Yeah, this is new to me as well, although it's not new to Northampton. So we did, we were approached a few months ago by a Northampton resident who's, who owns property that abuts the, the school's property. And, and he, along with, I think a couple other abutters, were working with a company to harvest some, some of the timber in, in the, in their wooded forest land. You know, both for, for the health of that, that forestry as well as for, for some revenue for that, for that timber. And they, they approached us to, to provide us the opportunity to participate in this activity. This has been done on two prior occasions on the Northampton School District property back in 1998 and in the early 80s, I believe. And what this does is it's, it provides some, some elimination of some hazards. It, so they're removing dead and rotted trees, unhealthy trees. They're going to, they're looking to thin out the disc golf holes that we've set up for better playability. Going to look at, so we have the, our, our existing trail network and a good number of the, the edging logs are, are rotting. So they're going to be removing, moving those and replacing them. Looking to, to preserve obviously our ropes and obstacle courses. And as well as cut some merchant, some, some timber that they can, that can be sold. This, this generally speaking is considered a good practice from a forest health perspective. It's a pretty light cut. And it's, it's something that would bring in approximately, it's $14,000 in revenue. So we, we have been working with, with both the, the abutter and the, the logging company with your forest technician. And they are, they are participants this evening. So they are available to answer any questions that you may have. But we do feel that this is appropriate action and kind of a win-win situation where we can get in on, on existing activity that will, will both help with our, with our, with our courses, our trails, and also bring in some, some revenue. There would be no access on our school grounds. They would be accessing the forest via one of the other budding lots. Because that's obviously a concern as far as safety or potential damage to the property. The two previous times it was accessed through the school property. So that, so that was an important item. They would also coordinate with us as far as scheduling to ensure that this did not occur during, when, when student school is in session. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or, or direct any questions to, to the two gentlemen who are on the call this, this evening.
Thanks, Matt. You, you actually answered a lot of my questions about access. And I think thinning is a great idea. And then whether it would be during the school hours or not. So thank you for that. My only question is duration. I didn't see in, in the proposal how long they thought it would go on. Is this like a, a year, six months? Do we have an idea of how long it will be going on?
I believe it's a few weeks.
Yeah, if I know who they are, I can like put them allowed to talk.
Nate Corbin.
I saw Nate, Nate earlier, but he's not on there now.
Right.
Okay. Glenn is the other one.
Yeah, Glenn's here.
Hello, folks, if you can hear me.
Yep.
Hi, Glenn. Hi, Glenn.
Hi, everybody. I'm an abutter on.
Uh-oh. We've lost Glenn.
We should.
Yeah, he dropped off altogether.
There he is.
You with us, Glenn?
I'm back, if you can hear me again.
Yep. We can hear you.
I'm an abutter on two sides of the, of the property. And it's actually been my family land for over 100 years. And, and, and we, we have done the harvesting in the past. Nate, I'm, I'm disappointed he's gone, but time, time, his time too was, is precious. So I'm, would tell you it's probably going to be two to three weeks, depending upon weather and other conditions and the time when we can get in there. There was potential to try to do it over summer break, with potential to try to do it over school winter break. So there are two different times a year and different seasons to be harvesting. So I'm not the expert in it. I've, I've hired someone else. But in the past, you might realize that if you look at your softball field in, in the outdoor, in the outfield fence doesn't go all the way across, that is because the access to the nature trail was kept open. So harvesting trucks and such could come and go from there. So that, that has been changed this year to not come through the school property and to go down one of the other abutters property to, to pull it out. So it's one less headache for the school.
Thank you, Glenn.
Glenn, can I get your last name?
Glenn Martin.
Martin?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Class of 1974.
Any additional questions for, for Matt or, or Glenn? Do we have a motion?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion.
I had a question. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, so if this was to take place during school time, would that just mean that things like Coyote Club wouldn't take place? Teachers couldn't have access for Forest Fridays and stuff like that? Or would we try to maybe push to have, have this happen over the summer?
No, so we, we would schedule it so that it did not occur during school.
Okay.
So, so I mean, it would likely be summer or it would be, so Glenn, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that like two to three weeks, that includes all the properties, not just the schools, right?
Last I knew, there was one other abutter that was determining if they were going to be harvesting his, their land as well. So it would be when school's not in session. Or it'd be so deep into the woods, you wouldn't even know what's going on. You think how long that nature trail is and such. But there would be no activity to entice curi- curious little kids to wander off and see what's going on. So again, I'm, I've hired someone to, to, to do my land and that is a large understanding that there would be no attractive nuisance for the kids to be wandering off.
Will, will we be marking the trees ahead of time that will be going down?
Yes.
Okay.
There's three attachments on the board docs that outlines much of this.
Yeah, I looked through, I was, I followed through those. I just didn't necessarily see that we were going to be able to see what was going down.
Yeah, so they haven't been marked yet. But they were, so, so Nate is the, the forest technician. It's unfortunate he's not here. But he, he, he will personally be marking each, each tree.
Yeah, because I'm not sure where you draw the line on what's mature and what needs to stay. And where do you, you know, it's a set cost of $14,000 about what we get back.
Hey, see Nate is here now. I'm going to allow him to talk.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Hi Nate, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Awesome. Yeah, I actually caught all that. I, I'm not sure what happened, if it timed out on me or something. But any.
Unmuted.
Hello?
Hi.
Yep. Okay. So to answer Aaron's question, that $14,000 is not, it's not a set cost. Basically, the revenue is going to be based off per thousand board feet for what we harvest and per ton for chips and pulp. The prices at which the school or the town, whoever receives the revenue, that, that's going to be outlined in a contract, which I prepare myself. I do all the paperwork and stuff like that. So yeah.
I think the question, I think the question is how do you determine what trees are, are going to be harvested?
So it's different for each of the species, for pine and pine and hemlock. That's over 20 inches, you're, you're in the maturity age. For oak and hardwoods, it's, it's a little smaller, more like 18 inches.
And we're, we're talking about eliminating all mature trees or a certain percentage per square foot?
No. Yeah, so there's a lot of variables that go in to paint, cut. there's a lot of variables that go in to paint, cut, location. If you have, if you have two twenty-inch trees right next to each other, we're going to cut one. There's a lot, there's just a lot of variables that go into it. Yeah, it's it it has a lot to do with health. If I see a tree that's only twelve inches, but it's scarred at the bottom from the last harvest, we're going to cut that. I'm just trying to think of some situations where you'd be walking in the woods and you'd see a tree and say, well, I wonder if they would cut that. A lot of the young growth would stay. That's a, that's obviously, that's going to be your next generation of forest. But basically, the remove, the total the total value of all the timber was forty-nine thousand dollars. And so in order for us to get that fourteen thousand, twelve to sixteen range, it would be cutting, I guess that'd be a little less than a third. However, a lot of that is going to be is going to be junk wood. But some of that's going to be the best of the best stuff. So yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what else you'd like me to say on that.
Nate, can I jump in? It's Glenn. This has been delayed. It should be done every ten to twelve years. And literally, I got the ball rolling with my parcel of land that hasn't been done since nineteen ninety-eight, so we're you know, twenty twenty-plus years into a harvest that should have taken place. So we've got a good year now to to cut again. And on my land, there the I've chosen to do a less intrusive type cut at thirty percent, if that helps you, Aaron. Trust me, it's gonna look like a disaster zone, just because people are going to say, oh, my God, where are all these trees coming from? But when you come down to a percentage of what's out there, it's it I'm I'm opting to go about a thirty percent range.
So you're you're thinning. This isn't a clear cut, you know, like in northern Maine. Yeah.
And I understand that it's for like the better health of the forests and stuff like that. I just, you know, I spent a lot of time back there, and I have kids that love that place and love the ponds that are back there and the wetlands that are back there. And to me, you know, a thirty percent or more cut, that's going to change, that's going to change the whole feel of the place. And, you know, I I don't know enough about, you know, I've read this through two to three times, and I just don't know enough about timber harvesting to, you know, make, you know, a decision that I'm okay with as an environmentalist. But that that's just and and maybe because I'm just not educated enough. But I I really, really enjoy that land, and I know a lot of kids and teachers that really enjoy the way it is now. I understand there being like the dangers in tree trimming. I mean, we live on five acres and we have a lot of trees around us, and we bring them in and we take down dead ones. And we, you know, trim down the the branches that are dead and that are dangerous and stuff like that. And I do understand that when you take one tree down, you do have a forest that comes up in a couple of years, the the ecological succession of that, but I'm just not sure what the balance is of how much you take to create a healthy forest. And so me personally, I'm just not knowledgeable enough, I don't think, to make a decision on that.
Aaron, I think a couple, a couple of things, if I may, is one, I think that one, that's why why we're hiring Nate and his company, because they have the expertise in that. I don't know a ton about it. I know a little bit about it. Obviously, they can't touch wetlands. It's protected. And it is common practice to to do this for the land. And so two things, one, we we can vote on it and move from there, or or two, you know, Aaron, what would it take to get you more comfortable with this? As we have a proposal in front of us, and I'm, and I think it's probably somewhat time-sensitive, because ideally, Matt, we're going to want to get this done during the summertime.
I think it'd be in our best interest to get this done before school reopens. This is an opportune time. We also, we have this opportunity with, because this is in conjunction with our our butters who are conducting this, so it's there's a certain quantity, you know, quantity of scale situation here where we'd like to do it. I mean, it makes sense to do it as one.
Matt, did I understand correctly, is 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 it one service that all the butters in the school will use, or are there separate tree services?
This is this is the same, one one contractor, which is.
The one contractor, two two butters in the school trying to coordinate.
Glenn, you said you've done this previous years, being that you've owned the property for a long time. How do you feel that it benefits like the nature that lives there and how you see that it affects that when it does, you know, when you've lived through this previously?
I vaguely remember the trees being stacked outside the softball fences, driving by at that point in time, seeing logs being hauled out earlier. But I will tell you that what you are seeing the benefit of the forest that you are now is from the the selective harvesting that's been done in the past. Stan Knowles was a local forester, Knowles family in North Hampton. He was the gentleman that has marked it and and was cut by his knowledge the last two times. And Nate can see the results of his plan. It's a planned forest management. I mean, it's just not haphazard, saying that's a good tree, that's not a bad tree. He's held to 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 selecting what will be best for the forest going forward for the next ten to twelve years.
Yeah.
And again, it's overgrown at this point in time. We're we're twenty-plus years out, so that's what got me moving on on my land and and that's how I, when I reached out to Matt, and he was the one that came up with the plans from the past, something I didn't have, because it was my grandfather that owned it at the time. And we did approach this with a prior school board, but was it was said to, you know, move on to the you, the new group that you folks are to to approve this.
And just to clarify, so when when Glenn says the prior school boards, he had reached out to originally to to James Sununu. It was just a timing. We we wanted to make sure we had all the information before we brought it to you. So it wasn't, we weren't holding off or anything like that. It was just that this is how long it took to get it prepared for you to see.
Thanks, Matt. I guess at this point, do we have, do we have a motion?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed timber harvesting by Sweets Logging and Land Clearing.
In a second? I'll second. And any further discussion?
A quick question, if I may. Glenn said he had slept at thirty percent clearing his land. Is that the same percentage for the school property, thirty percent? Or is it a different percentage on the school property?
Good question. I don't know what the percentage. I saw three to four hundred trees, but I don't know what the percentage was.
It, Matt, you know. May I answer that?
Yes.
It would be less than that. The estimated, I believe I relayed this to Matt, but estimated trees per acre was three to four hundred. And the estimated trees to be cut per acre would be roughly fifty to a hundred, probably more towards that fifty range. So it would be less than a thirty percent technically.
I'm sorry, Nate. Can you, can you, could you just do me a favor and restate that? Because I I think I heard two different acreages.
Yep, so I believe I had said this to Matt, but the estimated trees per acre is three to four hundred. And the estimated trees to be cut per acre is fifty to a hundred, leaning towards that fifty range more so.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay. So and to answer your question, it would be less than a thirty percent cut.
Okay, any additional questions for Nate or Matt? All right, this will require a roll call vote.
Sorry, I'm moving them back in as attendees before we.
Thank you, Nate. Thank you, Glenn.
Okay. So for roll call, I have Aaron Stanton. Aaron Stanton?
Well, I'm here. I'm trying to make my decision.
I will come back. Greg Duffy?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
And Aaron Stanton?
I'm abstaining because I don't feel like I have enough information.
Okay, I have the vote recorded.
Thank you, Rhonda.
You're welcome.
Is there a chance we're going to see the number of trees cut down before they go ahead with it?
They're going to mark them at some point, yes. Matt, will we be able to let Aaron walk through the woods when they mark the trees?
I walk through all the time.
Public property.
So I will find out when when that occurs, and then I will task Aaron with counting all those marks and letting us know the number.
It, yeah, it's just, you know, I I know there's forest man- management, and I know it's it's a healthy thing for forests, and I do know we have a really nice one, and that is probably because of what they said. I just also know when there's a monetary number attached to it, we remove trees from our own property, and sometimes, you know, the the pull to take some nice trees is there when, you know, you're removing a certain percentage, so you know. I speak for the trees.
Aaron, I think, you know, good points. I think Nate's contact information is in in your board docs on the sheets, and it's definitely feel free to to hit him up and and pick his brain. I think he comes highly recommended and experienced.
I will.
All right, moving on, we have some twenty twenty-one lunch price recommendations. This is fairly typical as we make adjustments from year to year. And Matt has an has a proposal for us on on that. I think you're muted still, Matt.
Thank you. Yes, so we do come to the board on annual basis to provide recommendations on the following year's lunch and breakfast pricing. So for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we are recommending a fifteen cent increase for both lunch and breakfast. So that would bring lunch up to three dollars and ten cents and breakfast up to a dollar sixty-five. This is in line with the USDA recommended lunch price, which is three dollars and nine cents. And that is something that we do. We we are required to report to the USDA as part of our free and reduced lunch requirements. And and they 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 do require us to maintain certain cer- certain price levels across, it's actually across the entire SAU. It's not by district. So we are recommending the approval of three dollars and ten cents for lunch and one sixty-five for breakfast.
I make a motion to approve the price of lunch of three-ten and a breakfast price of one sixty-five respectively for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, requires a roll call vote.
Aaron Stanton?
Yes.
Greg Duffy?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Martin Tavishian?
Yes.
And Nermina Peterson?
Yes. I have the vote recorded.
Thank you, Rhonda. All right, next order of business. Seven C, federal grant assurances.
Yeah, so yes, thank you. So as a recipient of federal grants funding, we are required to provide general assurances on an annual basis. And this this requires the superintendent's signature as well as the school board's chair, school board chair's signature, and we do need to provide these assurances for informational purposes to the remainder of the school board. What they essentially say is that we are following policy. You know, for example, we we're following non-discrimination laws or and as we're following non-conflict of interest laws, so all those items that we do have in policy, we are essentially assuring that we are following proper protocol. There is no action needed on this. We will be asking for Mr. Duffy's signature.
Okay. Thank you. Next order of business, actually, before we move on, does anyone have any questions on that? Nope. Okay. All right, moving on. Financial reports. Again, Matt.
So I I kind of went through some of our, you know, some of the accounts that we're we're recognizing savings as well as some of the accounts that were we've had to incur costs on as part of this remote environment. I have included both the expenditure and revenue reports in the packet. And, you know, as of today, those those reports are fairly accurate for how we're going to finish the the school year. There are a few accounts that aren't represented. That that includes retirement stipends that will be paid out prior to the end of the school year, as well as the the food service transfer. However, we do anticipate ending the year with approximately two hundred thousand dollars in unreserved fund balance. So we do feel that we will or we're confident that we'll be able to, we'll be fully funding our special educational spendable trust. As you recall, the that trust was passed that ballot in March to fund with fifty thousand dollars, so you know, if you remove that fifty thousand dollars funding the trust, you know, we should be returning approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the town to offset assessment. So be happy to answer any questions about specific accounts or any other questions.
Any questions for Matt? Okay. All right, next, under personnel, we have some nominations and a resignation. I believe we're discussing that in non-public.
That's correct.
And.
The resignation is.
Oh, sorry. The resignation, we can, we can take now. I'm sorry about that. You have a letter of resignation from Leah Crone, kindergarten teacher, who has taken a position, she said in her letter at the Tower School, where she began her teaching career and unfortunately won't be returning to North Hampton next year.
Greg, I'd like to make to make a motion to accept the resignation of Leah Crone as kindergarten teacher effective June thirty, twenty twenty.
Second.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Aaron, you're gonna have to unmute if you want a second. Gets the second.
So excited.
Okay, thank you for that. And best wishes. And best wishes to her as she moves closer to home, I think. Does that help her commute?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we ready for the roll call on that?
Oh, yes, we need a vote, roll call vote.
Erin Stanton?
Yes.
Greg Duffy?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Martin Tavashian?
Yes.
And Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
I have the vote recorded. Thank you.
Okay, and then I guess before we go into non-public, do we hit policy first? Is there any-
No, there actually are no, is no policy set of recommendations tonight. So we can, we can just go over, remember that we have a joint board update next week. On Tuesday, we have a joint board meeting with a full agenda on the 26th, and then your next meeting is on Thursday, June 4th.
Can I add a date to that?
Yeah.
Tomorrow, the 15th, is the last day to submit the superintendent survey. That survey closes at 4 o'clock, so if there is anybody that has not completed that, we're just asking that you go and complete that survey. And that's it.
Just to add clarity, that's the superintendent valuation, correct?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah.
All right, thank you for that reminder.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think we need a movement into non-public.
Greg, I'd like to make a motion to enter a non-public session under RSA 91A 32B.
Second.
And roll call? Now you're muted, Rhonda.
My turn, Erin.
We'll figure out this damn mute thing by the time we go back to school.
Erin Stanton?
Yes.
Greg Duffy?
Yes.
Tom Von Jess?
Yes.
Martin Tavashian?
Yes.
And Nermina Peterson?
Yes.
Okay. If you just give us a couple of moments, Dave and I will get everything ready. What we're going to do is we need to promote the attendees as panelists in order to put them on hold.
They're dropping like flies.
Yeah, they're all joining you guys. And now we just need to put them all on hold.
I didn't even help, Rhonda. I'm so sorry.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, I'm impressed.
Did it so quickly.
Did we pause the meeting?
Good job, Rhonda.
Pause recording.
Pause the recording and then we got to lock it, don't we? Okay, do we, does that look right to you?
Yep.
Okay, and we're going to resume the recording.
I did that and you unlocked this, so we're good.
Yep. All right, we resumed the public meeting at 8:24.
Greg, I'd like to make a motion to accept Dr. Lupini's recommendation of Tracy Barnes for first grade teacher for 2020, 2021 school year.
Second. I beat you.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Erin?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Nermina?
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
Thank you, Rhonda. Then we go ahead. Have one more motion?
All right, I make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations of Shannon DeRosa for the third grade teacher position for the 2021 school year.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Erin?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Nermina?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Okay, I think that wraps up all of our business. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Congratulations, Shannon.
Is she on?
She's here, yes.
Do we have a second?
I hope she knows the big shoes she needs to fill.
Got her own shoes. We want her in our shoes.
She'll be great.
Sure.
New shoes. I'll second that, Rhonda.
All right, do you want a roll call or is this unanimous?
Unanimous.
Adjourning is unanimous at 8:30.
8:26 PM. All right, good night, everybody.
Night.
Have a good evening.
Okay, bye.
Bye-bye.